But I'm happy to say all of ours is good news. But I'm going to let our chief financial man, Dr. Ed Vaughn Smith, talk about our budget adjustments. As you know, ours come back every year because we never know how much we're going to get from the state and the feds until, well, after budgets are settled.
Yes, I just tell myself we just do budgets every six months now. The majority of the changes are some, there were some changes to program allocations, but the majority of the changes to these revised budgets are due to growth money that we received from the 1991 realignment, which funds health, mental health and social service programs. And then the 2011 realignment that funds Protective Services Subaccount and Behavioral Health Subaccount. Those were kind of small, but it was extra money for the mental health and the subsequent budgets along with social services. So, majority of the budgets are increases in revenue and actually less of an impact on fund balance because most, a lot of budgets we submitted the end of the year, which really need to fund balance, stop to balance the budgets. And this kind of helped a little bit increase the revenue. Nothing unexpected and actually, it was actually good news I did because we never know what growth money we're going to receive until November, December is usually when it comes in. So, are there any questions?
Do we have any questions from Mr. Alba?
On your Tobacco Control Education Fund 115, you have a little sub note in there giving ability to recruit in house staff performing the services. You've contracted that out.
Right. We have been trying to take over the program from Diversified Management because Laura Roberts would really like to retire. And we have had such a hard time recruiting the position to actually run the program through public health that we're having to amend the contract with Diversified Management and have them continue to take over the responsibilities. So, we're trying to shift to the county.
We filled the two vacant positions this last week.
Yeah, we, they, good news was we just found last week.
We should be able to proceed with taking over that grant for the coming fiscal year.
Yeah, because I think at the first filing last week, she reported that they had hired her. So, she was excited about the fact that she was going to be in phase.
And Laura's ecstatic.
Yeah.
She wants to retire.
You weren't at the first filing. She made a big to-do at the meeting and that was what was happening. Quite when you said we didn't fill it and we had to go back.
Well, we just found out last week that we forgot. Well, they, yeah, they still already been down by them. But we're still going to be able to make it work because we do still need her contract.
There's still a transition phase. And I think her contract basically expires June 30th.
Yes.
And so, she's winding down as the new people are taken over. And it won't be based in-house and public health.
Yes, that's correct, yes.
And that's a two-person group or one or?
There is a public health program coordinator and then there's a senior attorney clerk, I believe.
Right, right, yes.
So, it's two people.
It is. And then I think a little bit of the director and the fiscal officer, I mentioned also.
Very good, thank you. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions on the floor? Do we have any questions from the audience? Seeing none, the chairman will entertain an action. And these will all require a force of vote because we're increasing pretty much every vote.
I would make a motion to approve H2, 1211 Health and Social Services Review Budget Revision.
Okay, you heard the motion by Mr. Pyle. Do you have that, Susan, the specific item?
Second.
Second by Mr. Himmple. No further discussion. Would you call the vote, please?
Supervisor Pyle?
Aye.
Supervisor Alba?
Aye.
Supervisor Hamill?
Aye.
Supervisor Chapman?
Aye.
The motion is unanimous, so ordered. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item H3, which is a letter to the Secretary of the California Senate and the Chief Clerk of the California State Assembly. This is an item I requested at the last meeting we placed on the agenda. Subsequent to the publishing of the packet, I did receive an email communication from a friend who pointed out to me that the letter addressed to the Secretary of the California Senate is erroneous in the fact that Reg. P. Schmidt is no longer the secretary, hasn't been for almost two years now. And Daniel Alvarez is. I had to go along to their website to find that. So, the information that we relied on from the Jefferson State Committee and their files to the Senate was incorrect. So, apparently they had not picked up on that factor over the last 18 months or so. This letter, these letters are not designed to debate the merits of the issue that the board spent a considerable amount of time debating, but just to point out to the both legislative bodies that the representations made by the Jefferson State Committee were flawed in the sense it did not even make reference to the vote that's going to be happening in June and that any action they take as it relates to Lassen County should be conditioned upon at least be held until the voters had a chance to vote on it. So, that's the purpose. I was planning on sending the letters individually on my own, but you know, if the board would like to do that in lieu of me sending it, I guarantee you this version of the letter is a lot milder than the version I had drafted from myself. So, it's really the board's, it's the board's pleasure if they want to weigh on it. I believe that they did not do a good job of representing the true facts of what the board and the public and the committee even had discussed and acted upon. And in terms of representing Resolution 15023, it wasn't what they said that mattered is what they chose to not say or include. That I think is sent up against.
I'd make a motion to approve the letter to authorize it during this time.
Do we have a motion by Mr. Pyle? Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Do we have a motion, a second by Mr. Alba? Is there any further discussion or comment? Yes, Mr. Alba.
The reason why I'm going to second this motion is, I mean, I was wanting to vote for the, to let it go to the people because that's what it should be. It's the people want to have the vote and I've had a lot of phone calls over, you know, the people want to vote, et cetera. And if we let this go unchallenged, I mean, these guys are just going to do the same thing that they were doing before as far as they're not listening to the voice of the people. And that's what I wanted to exhibit was let the people, the Lassen County, decide what they're going to do. Let them determine their future. And here again, I mean, the state of Jefferson, they just kind of overruled that and saying that we're already there. And I want the people to decide.
Yeah. Mr. Pyle?
Yeah, and I want people to understand, my vote against putting it on the ballot was not a vote against letting the people decide. It was a vote, my opinion is if I support ignoring the ballot, what I've done is told my constituents that I support the state of Jefferson. And I do not support it for the reason of giving them a blank check. Everybody in the audience, tear out a check, sign your name to it, send it to the state of Jefferson. If that's exactly what you're doing. I cannot support something I don't know what it is. And I'd be totally, you're just going to say what the county's thinking about if you support a issue I don't know. Our taxes, you want your property taxes to double? You want your sales taxes to triple? I'm not saying that's going to happen. What I'm saying is we don't know what's going to happen. We have no clue in a wild imagination what this state of Jefferson will bring upon us financially. There is no credible number, they do not exist. These people have no idea, no clue. And I am not going to support something that I don't know what it is. I don't know what this will bring to us. It could be a total disaster to the counties, to my constituents. Well, it had nothing to do with not letting the people decide. It had to do with not sending them the wrong signal that I support something that we don't know what it is. I would never vote on an issue that I don't know what I'm voting on. And that's what you do if you support the state of Jefferson.
Thank you, Mr. Pyle. Mr. Himmple, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay. I'm not, you know, in terms of debating the merits, I agree with you, Mr. Alba. I think that, I appreciate your passion for giving the people, that was the decision the board made basically in March of last year. And I think that the board has followed through on that. It was not a unanimous vote. Along with Mr. Pyle, I voted no. And basically, my position is not that the people should not have the right to do it. And I was castigated in the letter to the editor of the paper about that and I accept that criticism. It was a very difficult thing because I think the people should have the opportunity. And the fact that they're going to have that opportunity is fine, but my position is I think the whole thing, having been involved in previous movements to divide the state, that this one here in terms of the narrow focus and the group that is basically backing it, pushing it, the lack of facts, incredible information, the gross misrepresentation of facts from time to time, which has been even carried forward, or the lack of representing facts, which is carried forward in their activities in Sacramento, purportedly representing the people. My bottom line is I think this is a total waste of time, energy, effort, money. And I think all that energy should be directed to more positive outcome. I'm even more concerned about the fact that we have, I think the attitudes that they have stirred up amongst some of the counties in the north and how it's been perceived by those in Sacramento and throughout the rest of the state and for that matter even back in Washington. I think that the North State in terms of being given consideration for issues, it makes the job of our representatives that much difficult. And I, you know, reject their notion as we have no representation in Sacramento. I think we have the best representative in Sacramento right now and he's from Lassen County. And that's Ryan Dolly. And as he's trying to make the case that rural California, you know, needs to be given a fair shake, you know, in terms of the debates, I mean, he doesn't have the votes that the urban areas have, but he has the argument skills. You know, they're not going to take him seriously. I mean, so in many respects, I think it's disrespectful to him trying to make that case for us by, and so they just kind of blow it off. And when it comes to funding, I mean, the sheriff reported on the jail or the funding for jails and stuff or that committee he sits on at the state. He's one of two sheriffs. He's the only one from the rural area, but has dominated on this committee, people from San Diego and around. And when they allocated the money, the counties that were probably the most reciprous in favor of this Jefferson State movement are the ones that get kind of brushed to the side. I fully feel that part of the reason why we didn't get taken seriously for the $2 million grant application that the city and county put in or the city through the JPA put in for the pool to be able to enclose it, wasn't given any consideration. I mean, the road projects that we have, you know, with the limited funding that, you know, out of 729 projects, we were rated 622 and 654. They only funded the first 80, but if you look at the listing of projects that were in jeopardy, it's in these counties that are supporting Jefferson State. So, I think what we have really done is made ourselves unpopular to a point where we're actually losing out, I think, because of that. And I think we, you know, we need to make the system work. I don't think California has done a very good job of taking care of rural California. We've all made that. And that's not really what the argument should be about. But that's, I mean, that's what the argument should be about. That's what this Jefferson State thing, I think, does not accomplish. And so, as far as that, I'm going to be voting no on Measure G when it comes up. And I don't mind telling all my friends to vote no. And for me to pretend that this is something that has credibility, that we should give serious consideration to, I, that's the reason why I don't support it. So, I definitely am determined that we're going to have a factual record. And when documents are filed in Sacramento that misrepresent even the action of the board that I did support, you know, I want to make sure that they're held accountable to that. And just as everybody else should be held accountable. And we'll see, the public will determine. Ultimately, the fate is in their hands. And I think those employees or anybody who's employed in a public agency, which is more than 65% of our workforce, if they have, their funding comes from a state budget or if they are a local government agency that's dependent upon state budgets, you know, if they want to shoot themselves in the foot, they're relieved by voting for this here because it makes them feel good. That's fine. That's their privilege. It's their constitutional right. He would be wrong. But when their funding goes away, like the Modoc County Fair funding, that's, that was another good one. I heard a radio story and they were lamenting about how the state took all the funding away and the Modoc County Fair is going to close. Well, I can tell you right now, we're going to have more than just the Modoc County Fair being closed if this thing came to fruition because that's going to be what the new Jefferson world would be like, will be just like the Modoc Fair. And I don't think we need to do that. I think we need to remain a part of the sixth largest economy in the world, right, wrong or indifferent, and make the case that the great compromise of 1787, which is what the founding fathers did at the convention to balance urban and rural America, you know, gets restored. And there's ways to do that other than trying to vote on this. So, that's enough of that soapbox. We have a motion on the floor.
You did one word. You were very fast. We passed a lot of budget revisions yesterday this morning. Why didn't we give the people the right to do that? Have we tried to withhold information from the people? Where do you draw the line in what goes in the ballot, what our job as elected officials ought to do? I mean, obviously, the people can't do, all will review it. That's what I'd love to best to do. And to draw the line and say, I'm not giving the people the right to vote on something? They need the right to vote on anything we did this morning. The marijuana issue, did that go to the vote of the people? No. Is it need to? In my opinion, no. I mean, we do have a job to do. We have a responsibility to do. I guess you need to draw the line where that question goes to the people. The state of Jefferson should be taken care of here by us, not you.
I know. We're rehashing this deal. Back in March in 2015, we made a promise to the people of Lassen County that they'd get to vote on it.
I give it.
Well, you were outvoted, Bob.
Exactly, exactly. I appreciate that.
So, we need to keep that promise that we made to the citizens of Lassen County. That's our, that is also our job.
And I think that the board did that, they made that, and it's going to be voted on the people. That's not the issue. It's actually, it's before us today. The issue today is to make sure that the representations in Sacramento about that pending vote is properly communicated. So, do we have any additional comments from the public before the, I think the board has debated this enough. We're going to continue to do that. Seeing none, then we'll, clerk, hold vote, please.
Supervisor Pyle?
Aye.
Supervisor Alba?
Aye.
Supervisor Hamill?
No.
Supervisor Chapman?
Aye. The motion's carried and we're a board adjourned.
I'm going to cry and go home, Bob.
No, don't do that. Don't do that yet.
Let me stick out my lead like my little girl.
We will send the letters to the appropriate bodies to make sure the file reflects the fact that, you know, the representations that were made by this group were not complete accurate. So, we'll set that record date and we'll have the battle at the polls in June of the Senate. So, in that, thank you. We'll move on to item H4, which is County Council Resolution dealing with the Bass Hill landfill.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll be, you and I have a property that is near this, I won't participate. Mr. Chairman?
Well, I think we ought to just turn the Eacon Ranch into this annex into the landfill.
To be clear, he's not within 500 feet, but an abundance of caution. And after discussion with council, he thought it more prudent than not to send himself.
Yeah, he's the immediate next door neighbor.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we're here, we're back. We were here in the fall of last year to discuss whether this body was interested in stepping in place essentially of the JPA, the Solid Waste Authority, in its application process to the United States government for the purpose of acquiring two particularized parcels, a 160 acre parcel that exists out at the Bass Hill landfill and another 20 acres that exists in what has kind of loosely been called the old Hurlong dump, what is now a Hurlong transfer station. Those two parcels are currently in the title of the federal government. And as part of the long-term integrated solid waste management plan, the idea has been to move those items out of title of the federal government and into, initially it was to be title of the JPA, but the feds have some issue with the JPAs or, let me put it a different way, other than certain qualifying entities taking title to property under this Public Purposes and Recreation Act of the Code of Federal Regulations. So, we were here. We discussed the proposition of the county stepping in place so we could facilitate this transfer and we did so. This board authorized essentially the signing of a document, a letter from the chairman to the federal government saying, please, let us step in in place of the Solid Waste Authority in this application process. They were happy to have that occur. The process has evolved to the point where what you have now before you is the issuance of a land patent, the equivalent of a land deed, if you will, from the federal government for the 160 acres at the Bass Hill landfill. There's a map included in your packet. You know, the outline of the parcel, the subject of parcel was not as great as, it didn't come out as well on the photocopy as I'd hoped. I'm happy to describe that if you have any questions about that. Essentially, we already own 40 acres out there and this 160 is on three sides of it. And there's a leg off one of those sides. And then also, there is a draft quitclaim deed in the packet that relates to the proposed transfer of the 20 acres in Hurlong. Both the legal descriptions in both of the documents have been confirmed by our own surveyor. We believe that, you should know that when the land patent was, this is the second land patent. This is a revised land patent, if you will. It first came to us in December and I was chomping at the bit to resolve this issue, but it didn't read quite right. It didn't give us the flexibility down the road to be able to engage in all of the activities related to what a sanitary district might want to engage in. And so, we needed to ask them to essentially modify it or, you know, reissue it, if you will, with a little broader language. And they were happy to do so. It's been a good exchange between the county of Lassen and our friends at the BLM and the federal government. They have been very helpful. The cost for the purchase of the 160 acres was 100, excuse me, $1,600 total. And the cost for the acquisition of the Hurlong transfer station was another 200. Essentially, what was it? 10 bucks an acre. 10 bucks an acre. And so, there is a resolution before you to deal with, essentially, we have to, you have to decide whether you want to accept these parcels into the county ownership or not. And if you do, that would be displayed by approving the resolution and then subsequently, I would record through the office of the county recorder, the land patent. And subsequent to that, the federal government would approve the draft quitclaim, would present it to me for recording as well.
Mr. Chairman, I would be in motion to adopt the resolution. Okay, per the motion by Mr. Pyle, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Himmple. Is there any discussion on the part of the board? Mr. Alba?
I know that this is going to the county, but it's also going to be ran by the, by the JPA. Is there any, are we going to give an indemnification from the JPA as well as, as far as that?
I guess my answer to that, Mr. Supervisor, is first things first. Once we acquire this, the question will then be what do we do with it? Do we, at some point down the road, convey it to the JPA? Or do we hold it as our own? And this will be a subject of some further discussion, uncertain. If we hold it as our own and enter into a sort of arrangement with the JPA, maybe we lease it to them for a dollar a year like we have some other lands. Absolutely, any agreement that we reach will have, as long as I'm involved in the contract or agreement negotiating part of it, indemnification provision served. Can I answer your question?
You do, thank you.
Very good.
And if I could add to that, first of all, I, you know, I think on face value, that would be the expectation in the operation of the Solid Waste Program through the JPA, you know, would provide whatever necessary umbrella covering for us. But we have to keep in mind that the JPA is us. It basically, regardless of whether we have the JPA or not, and whether or not we have an indemnification or not, we ultimately still have the responsibility. And so, I think it's beneficial for us to be at least proactive and in control of the property there. And I think, in my opinion, conveying it to the JPA is the appropriate thing to do. To acquire it just for the fact of having it for the county accomplishes no purpose. It's only been acquired to accommodate the needs of the JPA. If the JPA goes out of business, it evolves back to us. So, prior to 1998, when all the other properties were acquired, the county was the holder of the lands from, that were acquired for that purpose. And we would continue to have that long-term residual responsibility. The only reason why we have a JPA is that the state through its solid waste division recognizes that a good half of the population of the county lies within the city. And they felt that, you know, to just rely on the county only to be responsible wasn't sufficient enough. So, they basically created the marriage between the city and the county interest in the JPA so that they jointly have that responsibility. But in the absence of that, we're it and we always will be it. So, and once we get past that threshold, I'm more than good at doing this. And being on the JPA board as one of the two reps, Mr. Hammond being the other in these recent discussions, I think this is a really smart move and a good move and a strong move. And it provides the backing that the JPA needs in getting it. And I appreciate what Bob did because the initial, what they gave us was fairly limited as to what we can do. And it was staff. And it was Mr. Shaw, it was Mr. Valentino, Mr. Burns, having some discussions about what it is that they were wanting, what we need to be able to do with the land. We all of a sudden realized that there were a lot of limitations that would frustrate that. So, this was supposed to have been to us like last November, but they pushed back and said no, went back to the table and were able to get that discussion revised so we could have what it is for us today, which gives us the powers that we need and the ability to do what needs to be done.
Well, that's just what I want to make sure, that things can still move forward.
Oh, yeah.
That everybody's covered.
You know, and there's a lot of angst in the press today and the media today about, you know, the relationships between the locals and the federal government, so federal lands in the West. I mean, it's huge volumes. But what they don't put in there is that we also have good working relationships, I mean, with our federal partners. And I think this is a good example where we work closely with BLM and they've been very accommodating to local needs in respect of the role and relationship of local government to the properties that they're responsible to, I guess overseeing and managing. But now we're going to manage. So, any further question, comments? Do we have anybody from the audience who would like to speak on the item? Seeing none, then we'll come back. We have a motion on the floor for a second. All those in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, so ordered.
Very good. Richard?
Yeah.
We're telling them we're home for the rest of the day.
Yeah. We don't, we don't, we don't need, we don't need, we didn't turn on that item without it.
We might need it, but it's next.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, yes. Boy, we're segueing.
Oh, yeah, we definitely need it, this item.
Okay. Well, uh...
Item H5?
Item H5. Mr. Chairman, members of the, item H5 is, it's not slated for any action today. The only action that's being contemplated essentially is for, you know, staff to report to you recommendations on amendments to the existing marijuana cultivation ordinance and also the county's dispensary ordinance. I'll get to that in just a second. There is, there is no item agendized for today asking you to move to introduce, read, waive reading or the like. We're at discussion point. And that is all. Now, if you recall...
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you. We'll talk. There is, if you recall, the last time we were here, which was, well, many times over the course of the fall and spring of 2014 and spring of 15, we got to the point where we needed to act because spring cultivation essentially was upon us. And consequently, you voted to approve an urgency ordinance. As you know, an urgency ordinance is something that can be done in one sitting, it is effective immediately and requires a four-fifths vote. We're not, I don't think, positioned the same this time around. We're contemplating amendment. It's February, it's not May, and we've got some time. So, unless things really develop in a different way, I don't see us proceeding by way of urgency ordinance. I see us proceeding by way of standard form, you know, two meetings. I see us proceeding by way of standard form, you know, two meetings, introduction and reading, or waiver, and subsequent vote to adopt at a meeting no less than five days thereafter. So, that's kind of the backdrop, if you will. You recall that, based on Supervisor Alba's request, we came and did a kind of post-cultivation season update. And I provided that to you, I don't remember when that was, November or early December, I don't recall. But we talked about the experience that we gathered from being involved in the enforcement of the ordinance that you adopted, this Title 19 of the Alaskan County Code, what our collective experience was. I think Maury was here at the time. I can't remember who else weighed in on it. But that, there were some conclusions that we reached, and I think the consensus was, while not perfect, we did manage, and I know one supervisor may have some qualification of this comment, but that, for the most part, we were effective at garnering compliance when we had contact with the growers. And that, you know, in my view, was a success. I don't know that there are too many laws on the books that gather 100% compliance from the citizenry, but it is somewhat satisfying to know that you participate in the crafting of an ordinance that ultimately people want to comply with. You know, that gathers a certain degree of confidence by the citizens. Anyways, for whatever it's worth, we had what we think was a, at least moderately successful first enforcement season, if you will. But again, not perfect. There were some things that we identified that we believe needed correction. And that is the purpose of this proposed amendment, to offer to you draft, or I shouldn't say, recommendations in draft form, to Title 19. And some were just errors that, if you recall, when we were here in, I want to say, April or May of last year, when we were voting on the actual ordinance, it was like 3:15, and we'd had some exchanges, I think Randy and Ted were here. And I was kind of pushing to wrap it, and I made some last-minute changes, and then ran upstairs and printed off 10 copies while the chairman took a 10-minute recess, and we came back down and we, you, voted on it. There were a couple of little errors in there that I found, that I'm seeking to correct. So there's some of that. But there's also some substantive stuff. And there's really one substantive item that I really want to comment on, and so, we'll get to that in just a second. But the, this is Title 19. This is the marijuana cultivation ordinance. This was the nuisance-based ordinance that you adopted because we were receiving complaints from some of Mr. Powell's constituents. We got some from what was, I think at the time, Mr. Wassick's constituents. People essentially growing in bedroom communities, and growing outdoors, and growing in somewhat high volumes, and growing immediately adjacent to their neighbors. And it was impacting the people that didn't really want to be impacted. And so, that was the reason we were here. But since that time, we've also seen something else occur. And that something else is, we saw some fairly dramatic movement through the state legislature in the enactment of three bills. Three bills in particular, AB 266, AB 243, and SB 643. And what I will say about those three pieces of legislation is that while there may have been people who have held out the belief that this concept of medical marijuana is, you know, kind of reached its peak in California, and, you know, that's about as developed as the right to grow and possess and smoke marijuana, as developed as it's going to get. Boy, that theory is out the window with the advent of those three bills. Those three bills essentially create a whole new, and they're law currently. The governor signed them, they are in place. And government systems in Sacramento are ramping up to implement them through the creation and promulgation of regulations. New departments within the California Department of Food and Agriculture, new departments within the Department of Consumer Affairs. We have, these three bills essentially seek to, well, under medical marijuana, 215 and SB 420, you know, the cultivation, possession, and ultimate consumption of marijuana was always confined to medical patients and/or their primary caregivers, and it was never intended to be allowed to be grown for profit. While that's out the window, the three bills that were adopted by the legislature specifically address the growing of marijuana commercially and for profit. And a whole structure of regulation to deal with that. And so, that happened, and that happened recently. I want to say in the late fall, late fall, November-ish, something of the like. And so, I'll tell you that the county council networks are abuzz with, that's poor word choice. Just occurred to me. Maybe the county, the county council networks are lit up. Sorry, poor word choice.
Nice try.
They are, I'm searching, searching. There's a lot of action on the county...
You're out of order, Chairman.
I apologize. There's a lot of discussion on the county council networks about how exactly these things are going to be implemented. I want to, if I, I'm paying attention to those. I've been talking with other county councils about what the thoughts are in their counties and how they're going to deal with them. We've got a little bit of time. We did not have time for a moment there. There was language in these bills that talked about having a, some regulation in place by March 1. And if you didn't have certain regulations in place by March 1, you essentially forfeited your right to regulate on that topic.
But let me feel that they changed that.
They, through AB 21, which was signed by the governor within the last week or two...
Yeah, week last week.
Yes. That March 1 component is gone, at least for now. Let me say, the heat is off a little bit to rush, to develop...
Well, just like the legislature, just like you kind of rushed to get, and trying to fix things, when they rushed to do that bill at the end of the session last year, they had problems that they didn't realize they had, so they had to come back and fix it.
Well, and that, I'm coming around full circle here now, Mr. Chairman. There's two things in your packet. There's a proposed staff recommendations for amendments to Title 19, but there's also a proposed amendment to the dispensary ordinance. And that second, and I posted this to the clerk for agendizing today before AB 21 was signed, because I did not know whether it would be signed or not. And the, let's, if we can, dispense with, the second part of your packet, and that's the draft amendments to the dispensary ordinance. The component that I added there was essentially to prohibit out-of-county dispensaries from making mobile deliveries of marijuana into Alaskan County. Because if we didn't have that on the books by March 1, according to AB 21, or these three bills, we may have lost the ability to regulate on that topic. And we wouldn't necessarily be in a position to stop it if it was your pleasure to not allow that. And I don't know the answer to that question. And so, I proposed, before AB 21 was signed, an amendment to the dispensary ordinance which would deal with that. I think at this point, I would recommend to you that we fall back, at least on that point, and wait a little bit more, and discuss what it is we want, and what it is we don't want. But what, but what I don't necessarily want to do is retreat from, or not carry on with, the discussion about the amendments to Title 19. Those are changes that I'm going to recommend occur, no matter the three bills, or AB 21 that got signed. They will continue to deal with the individuals in Alaskan County that want to cultivate for either themselves, or as a primary caregiver for others. And to do so in a way that reflects what we learned from last year's enforcement season. That's the point. Sorry I took a little bit longer.
Let's focus on what those are.
Excellent. And so, I included the track changes draft, so that you could see, what is, what is provided here is an identical copy to what you adopted last May, unless it's been amended, stricken out, or changed through the track changes function. And so, really, the important point is, as you scroll through the pages, I added a little bit in terms of definitions, particularly on, oh, I did not number the pages, I apologize.
It's on the 13th, right?
I'm looking at page 4 in particular. At the top, it's a continuation of the definition of indoor or indoors to deal with the issue of greenhouses. There was a gap, or that issue was not covered in the initial, well, what is the law now here? And so, I added that the cultivation of marijuana which occurs in a greenhouse is considered outdoor cultivation for purposes of this title. The only way it would be considered indoor is if it comports with the requirements in that same paragraph, in essence being something of substantial construction. So, there's that change, or proposed change, I should say.
Before you go past it, going back to the front, the very front, when you're section 1...
Yes, sir.
You basically have Title 19 being repealed.
I do.
And you want to take that out, that repeal part?
No, I don't. The mechanical way I've chosen to do this amendment is to repeal it in its entirety, and then restate it in its entirety with changes. That's, that's the mechanical way I chose to go about it. There are other ways to go about it.
I follow what you're talking about. I was confused by that.
And it's one style of legislating, if you will?
Yeah.
There are others? If you find it distasteful, I'm happy to improvise it and overcome.
It works. It'll be cleaner than otherwise.
Actually, I think it does. Anyway, so, so back to page 4, there's, there's the proposed additional language on what constitutes indoor or indoors. There is also, further down, under the word premises. And this, we only, I think we may have seen this one time only throughout the course of last year, but, you know, the definition of what constitutes contiguous parcel for purposes of this ordinance. If two parcels touch at any point along their respective boundaries, then they would be, under the proposed draft change, they would be considered contiguous.
Now, that considers two squares touching on the corners?
Two squares touching on the corners, they touch at a point. Or two less-than-squares touching at any one point would be contiguous, sir. And then, really, the, if you remember from our discussions last year, you know, I kind of described the draft ordinance at that time as, I mean, the meat of this thing was in the conditions of cultivation section of the ordinance. Those would be the conditions under which cultivation of marijuana would be permitted. And we have A through G, and that's on page 4, 5, and 6. The bottom of 4, all of 5, and all of 6, and I'm sorry, the top of 7. And so, really what those did was, if you recall, we went through the tiered approach to allowing cultivation in terms of how much would be permitted, allowed. And there is one interesting addition under C3, which I think you'll pay, find a page, it's either 6 or 7. But it's C3 nevertheless, that's for premises 11 acres in size up to, but not including 41 acres in size. I can't explain why, maybe it was the heat of battle, but we included, in all of the other parcel size designations, you know, 1 acre or less, 1 acre to 11, and 41 acres and above, we included setbacks from existing dwellings, but we didn't happen to include it in the designation of parcels from 11 to 41. I can't explain it. That proposes to add that, and it adds it in a manner that's consistent with the others. Then, the next proposed change you may find at subsection E of that, which I think is going to be...
Page 6.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry I didn't number those. E. Interestingly, when the ordinance was adopted, and shortly thereafter, we noticed that, was it E and F, or D and E? I believe it was D and E. We found item D and E to be absolutely identical to each other. It was just a repeat. And again, I don't know how that made it into it. But by way of correction, this time around, I had stricken the second...
It is, it is a way to emphasize the importance of...
I didn't want to joke, because this is a serious thing, but it did occur to me, say, we really meant it, so we said it twice.
No, it's really, really meant it.
That's right. So, so, so part of E is stricken, but what's really more important is, is part of E has been added. And the part of E that's been added is probably the most substantial addition to this draft that you have before you today. And that is that any cultivation that occurs on any premises within the County Alaskan may only occur on premises where there is a lawfully permitted and constructed residential structure. And the reason that's important is because of the experience we gathered from last year. The experience we gathered from last year, and again, I don't know if, if this was more a function of, you know, they started acquiring land and growing before we got our ordinance adopted, or at least had the plan set in place. Because remember, we adopted this in, I want to say, April or May. But there were a whole host of growers in the county, and I'm thinking they were in Mr. Hammond's and/or in Mr. Alba's districts, that had acquired parcels of land, just rawdirt, erected a fence, and not of the substantial construction kind that we're talking about in the ordinance. We're talking a, you know, a visqueen fence held up by tea stakes, and you know how long those last in this windy climate at times. And then they started their crop. And no RV, even though on many of them, an RV was drug on, or no house, and it became a mess, is what it did. And so, we had debris, high traffic, we think water theft, we had a number of issues, and this draft change seeks to deal with that. Sir?
Another comment on this point, because we're talking, same place you're talking, is there is a legally permitted residence on the property, but it is in an uninhabitable state at this point. So, should you be able to put that in there too? Just to get your basis covered on that? Because even though it's...
The restrictions are what you want them to be, as long as they're reasonably related to the nuisance that you seek to preclude.
Well, I mean, I don't think you can change that very easily.
Yes.
If it's legally permitted and...
You're right.
A residential structure that is inhabitable, so...
Legally constructed and occupied, because if it's not a legal, if it's, if it's Legally constructed and occupied, because if it's not a legal, if it's been red-tagged, there would be, or if it's not habitable, it would have a notice to not occupy.
I don't think of the rock house up there in Central Philadelphia.
So, occupied isn't the right word, because you could have legally permitted, properly constructed structure that ultimately gets red-tagged, and they're still living it.
Well, legally occupied.
Yeah, okay, fair enough.
Legally occupied, I think.
So, if that's your prerogative, that's your prerogative. But, the point is, is that, and, I mean, if we're trying to deal with the folks who are growing either for themselves or as a caregiver for others, that's, typically they're going to do it on their own land.
I think what we're trying to get at is, we want to be dealing with people who are legitimately have a vested interest in stake there. And in every instance, there's always going to be somebody who's going to try to fly under the radar. And so, that's why I think there was a desire to have that, like as a lawfully constructed, permitted, habitable residence is what was the base to the consideration. So, preclude somebody just moving in a temporary home to deal with a temporary crop, and then when the dust settles, be gone. And so, those are the people we want to try to avoid having standing. So, and that's.
And right now, they do.
And right now, and because of the loopholes that are there, and that's what this one closes. And I think Mr. Albaugh's point is pretty well taken. I would go further in terms of that definition to make it legitimately habitable.
I'll come up with some language that I think will address that specific issue expressed by.
We don't have a solid problem of having, we just want to be able to do business with somebody who is there legitimately being able to do the business.
Now, and I apologize, I was late coming back into session after we reconvened after the recess. I was outside talking to Ted and Randy, and we started talking about some of these issues, and then time got away from me, and I apologize. But one of the suggestions I think you might hear is, is to deal with this issue, why don't you build in a two-year residency requirement? I'm not recommending that necessarily, I'm not taking a position, I'm just saying you might hear about that and consider that.
Somebody to have homeless camp in a temporary tent or shelter should not be able to have an outdoor grow.
Understood. So, the point is, is that if it's a lawfully permitted and constructed residence that is lawfully occupied, might you also have, and this would preclude, you know, the folks that are coming in from out of county to buy a land to grow, because we got a 72-plant limit, you know, where they can't, other places like Fresno or whatever the other counties are that aren't allowing it? Why don't you put a two-year cap, or a two-year requirement that you've lived here for, and that might deter some of that? Don't know. Just a thought, just mentioning it.
Yeah, you might be careful, though, in terms of standard, because to register, I mean, to be a voter and a district participant, you basically have like a 30-day residency. So, if you create a 30-day residency here, and then you have a two-year one there, is that going to be perceived as arbitrary?
Is there a legal impediment to that? You know, I don't know, I've always wondered about the county ordinance which says that out-of-county residents can't bring waste to our landfills. I've always wondered about that. But, so, just mentioning it because it came up with Randy and Ted, and I don't have an answer to whether that's permissible or not. Yes, sir?
What is our code? Like, say you want to build a house, and you want to live in your campground.
You cannot.
Well, you're building your house. I mean, how is this going to affect that? Because I can see some guy going up here to Ravenhill, or wherever, name will pick the location. Well, we got a permit to build a house here, but we're going to live in our RV over there, with no septic, no sewer.
What I can tell you is, the next game, if you will, will be that they drag an RV on the premises, and they take out a building permit, and they're green, they're good to go.
But I think what you're saying, you have to reside in the residence, you can't reside in.
I'm just trying to build up, you know, our building.
Well, until you, you don't sell more building permits.
No, I don't want to, I mean, I want to build, wrap up construction in Lassen County as we're going along with this.
Until you get a certificate of occupancy, I don't think you meet the definition of legally.
As proposed.
Constructed.
Yeah. And so, it's, I guess what I would say is, to accommodate all of this, I mean, we could.
I just don't want that to be loopholes.
No, I understand, and it wouldn't allow for that. It wouldn't allow for someone who drags an RV onto their piece of bare land that has a building permit that submitted plans and has a foundation, it wouldn't permit them to cultivate until such time as they get that certificate of occupancy and actually begin to occupy.
Because it's not a permitted.
Correct. In the manner in which we've just been describing. So, but that's the most substantive proposed change of this draft ordinance. And it seeks to deal with a very identified issue that we learned from last season around. I think anybody that was a participant in that process will tell you, you know, the issue we had, and by the way, I would say that the cultivation that was occurring in Lake Forest is no longer, at least those issues that caused us to have the study session in the first place in December of '14. We do not believe they are occurring in the way that they were or even close. Likewise, the grow that was on Valley View in Janesville, we believe, did not recur. We think that the enforcement measures were, and actually, a lot of the credit has to go to Randy and Ted for bringing forward the comments about, you know, you wouldn't let someone, you know, raise cattle on Main Street, Janesville, I think was the analogy that was made during the discussions. Yeah, come on, Richard. The tiered approach, really, in hindsight, became a fairly sensible approach, and so, that was good.
I tell you what, on your upcoming vacation trip and time away, maybe you can congeate a little bit on how to use the lawyer words to come up with maybe a better wording of how to achieve what has been discussed.
I can do that. Let me take that as a clue. The remainder of the draft amendments related to process, they certainly are more procedural than anything. What I did was, I built more time into the process. So, I essentially doubled up on the amount of time an individual that's getting sighted is allowed of notice, and how we serve notice.
I saw that, but hey, Jay, I want to kind of come back under service of notice, I think.
Yes.
You know, you took out certified overnight mail, overnight courier service, overnight, you know, basically, kind of an overnight mail basically gives you, it basically would extend by one day, you know, the time served, and you're changing that to first-class postage prepaid US mail service.
Yes, sir.
UPS.
The United States Postal Service.
I think having one additional day basically extended by that doesn't work. We have the courier overnight mail, when you pay the premium, whether it's express mail or priority express mail, where you can pay anywhere from $22 to $60 to mail something at that rate, which is excessive. Priority mail has now jumped up, used to be around $4 and something, has jumped up to $6.45 is the base level, and it goes up from there, you can pay $20 or more, depending upon where you're mailing to and the amount, the weight and stuff. But when it comes to first-class mail, up for probably a good hundred years or more, up until about five years ago, that was kind of the standard, and first-class mail was considered to be paid, now it's .49 cents, back then it was probably less, but you would pay that, and it would be delivered in one to three days, and then you had third-class mail, which is bulk mail, that would be three to five days, would be kind of the delivery standard. Well, with the emergence of priority mail and paying the money to do that, they've now made what used to be the first-class standard, one to maybe three days, as being your priority mail unless you pay the overnight rate, which is that super explosive rate, then they'll do it overnight. And first-class mail is basically like what the old.
That's why I proposed the change, because it was killing us on the fee.
Well, it would be killing you on the fee, and that's okay, and you'd probably be smart to do that, but if you're going to do that, you need to change that extended by one additional day. If you're going to use the first-class standard, you know, if it's in the immediate local area, you know, most of the time it'll get delivered the next day, but no later than the second day. The post office is not on the hook to deliver it.
Understood.
For three to five days, and the old bulk mail now, you know, it could be 10 days to two weeks.
How many would you suggest?
I would suggest at a minimum, I would do at least two, but I would say probably three would be, that would be the earliest, I mean, because the mail's not going to get delivered, especially if it's somebody who, now, if somebody's like in the local town, like from Susanville to Janesville, it's probably going to be there in a day or two. But it could be there in three or four days. It doesn't necessarily have to be there in a day or two. So, I think if you did like maybe three days, it would be a good average.
Happy to do that.
That was one of the questions I had.
If you tried to get up to big value, mail.
Big value, it's, mail was terrible because.
Stork only comes in every now and again.
Well, the routing they have is bizarre, because priority mail, they'll get it up there overnight or within two days, but if it's a .49 cent stamp, goes from here to Reno, it used to go from here to Reno to Vegas, to Oakland to Sacramento, and then it would come up the valley and eventually get to Beaver, and it's just because of the way the zip codes are set up. So Beaver is probably on a first-class letter, it could be a week, it could be a week.
Yeah. So, the remainder of the draft changes that were proposed, again, are process, and I don't know that, what they do is they just build a little breathing room into the enforcement process, for all concern, not just the county. It wasn't, the draft changes weren't one-sided, they were also intended to allow.
Well, your enforcement, you took it from two days to five days.
Yes, sir.
Creating some breathing room right there, so that's kind of what you need to do in this other as well.
Yes, sir.
Maybe if you take it to five days there, maybe what you do by going first-class mail is put five days as the additional timeframe there.
So, so.
Allows it to get a better chance to get up your way.
What I want to kind of segue with is that these draft changes, I think, need to hopefully, or whatever you ultimately settle on are your draft, or become the changes, occur before the growing season begins and maybe even sooner than that. So, it's my hope to come back to you in early March with, you know, an ordinance that adopts some or all of this for introduction and reading, and then another meeting thereafter for vote on adoption.
I don't think we need to rehash everything that's in there, it's kind of a US, because settled laws, you guys like to use the term, but I think any sort of refinements and tweaking to make it more operable, I think that's in order, but any time.
But there's another discussion to be had, and it's a very important discussion, because as I mentioned to you before, those three pieces of legislation were signed and are now law. And we have to have the discussion at some point whether we are going to, and I favor doing it sooner rather than later. And I've spoken to at least one member of this board, who's expressed an interest in having this conversation and this public debate about whether or not we're going to permit commercial cultivation for profit as the new state legislation, you know, makes room for, and whether we're going to allow that to occur in Lassen County. Because if we're going to allow it to occur in Lassen County, we have the ability to regulate, tax, to, that we have a whole bunch of, I don't want to say opportunities, but we have a stake in the game, because the legislation plainly said that the state will not issue licenses to commercial growers unless the county has first done so. So, the bottom line there is, is no one can grow in Lassen County commercially for profit unless they meet your standards in terms of what's permissible. And that could be no commercial growing, or, you know, only indoor in a shop-type building and up to plant counts consistent with this, or it could be something entirely different. So, we need to have that conversation. And so, I look forward, but I view that as a separate conversation from these draft amendments for the medical stuff, but it's coming right on the heels of it. So, I, yeah, that's why I have.
Why don't you cross that bridge when we get to it? Let's maybe get this foundation tightened up, and then we'll see how that plays out, because a lot of it's already out there.
Okay.
And if the clock drags on long enough, a couple of us won't have to worry about being the one to deal with it.
Well, I'm hopeful that we can resolve it much sooner than that. I know there is, there's some belief that.
You have to do that every day, don't you?
There's some belief that if we strike while the iron's hot and implement a commercial ordinance that allows for the commercial for-profit cultivation of marijuana under certain circumstances, that perhaps investment might come to Lassen County to permit that to occur here rather than go to other places. I'll tell you, other places are looking at the same issue and are thinking about acting quickly as well.
And speaking of commercial, I am looking for a commercial lunch at some point in time, so.
Sorry.
Okay, good. Good job, Bobby, you covered.
You didn't, bad registry.
I did not, I did not. And, so, that was the part of, I know we spoke about that. That was the part about provide direction to staff on the agenda that I'm looking for. Is there anything that I've missed? Is there anything that any, you know, of you, or a majority of you, want in this that I need to write in?
Last year was kind of the beta test of how, what came together, how it played out, and I think that it, for the most part, achieved what we were looking for, and that was to get these grows out of the residential neighborhoods and into settings that would be a little bit more appropriate. We don't have the problem up at Lake Forest anymore, we didn't have that other problem out in Janesville, there was also one out there, past your place there, on Cummings, wasn't it? That we had a fair amount of complaints about. And the fact that we, that wasn't replicated as a result of the ordinance and the action was good. So, how do we fine-tune it and set us up for the next round? I guess maybe that's what we need to do, but I don't think we need to change it much, or.
Well, in fairness to Supervisor Hep Hill, we did have conversation about a couple of components of changes. I did not incorporate them, but I was kind of counting on the supervisor to bring them up at this meeting, and so, I'm right here, right now, and so.
I think we need to have where they come in, register with the county that they're going to grow. So, that gives Maury a head.
So, they have to register their guns at the same time?
No.
Be somebody that's grown six, five, and then they can go to.
But don't we give them an ID card, isn't that a registry?
Well, that's a whole different program, that's the medical marijuana program.
Well, that's what it's been tied to. Now, if we go beyond medical marijuana, then it's a whole new thing, but this whole thing is supposed to be predicated on the medical marijuana need.
The medical marijuana program that commonplace the issuance of the ID card is entirely voluntary. So, there's a whole cadre of people that are going to cultivate either for themselves or as a caregiver for others that aren't going to sign up for the medical marijuana program. We have some that come in and sign up, Nell knows about that, if she's gone. But, it's voluntary. Always has been voluntary.
So, what's the reasoning, I mean, why do we want to do registration? What's that going to achieve?
Know who the competition is?
Help me out, why do we want to do that? That I'm missing.
One thing that I could see is that if, I don't know, I wish law enforcement was here, but if they had a list of who was legally growing, and they got a complaint, it might help them sort how they approach that, because if they're not on the list, then, or that address isn't on the list, then of course they're not in compliance and so.
It just makes it a more legit deal, if you will.
Like a business license?
Like a business license. I think it would help law enforcement, like Richard said, when you know that, you know, we get a complaint about Ted, and we know Ted's growing it, but then we got some guy up the hill that we don't know, you know? It gives him a heads-up of how to approach the situation. Does that make sense?
My thinking was.
The gentleman on the side is hearing that, coming from a tea party person, you want to go with it.
I don't want us to get into, have this thing be, because I know registering, like the gun registering has been a controversial thing amongst gun owners, and so, we need to.
That's a little more constitutional with marijuana.
Well, but I'm saying is, the theory, though, is still pretty much the same.
Don't demonize this week.
I mean, I just don't want this issue to get sucked up in those kind of things, is what I could see that happening, but I think, you know, maybe having a business license as a requirement, but by doing that, you kind of create a de facto.
But we don't issue business licenses.
You don't have one, okay.
Well.
Sorry, not to be the nattery may-bob. Sorry, not to be the nattery Maybom.
Maybe that might be something worth considering.
Growing marijuana for yourself, or as for other people that you, they have the card and all that, is not a business. Well, maybe we...
Not supposed to be.
Not supposed to be. But I mean, the reality is, is that's what's going on.
Make it, make it a use for it.
It is, it is.
Are we to that point yet?
I, I, I'm in paris...
It will be after January 30, 2017.
There he goes again. There you go again.
I just, I just think that it's something that we need to do to be prepared, to be on the, ahead on these laws that have already been passed.
Be proactive instead of reacting.
Yes, I'm going to say, I want to hear from the sheriff first. If it is beneficial to the sheriff, maybe we need to do it, because...
As a law enforcement tool?
Yeah.
That's not unreasonable at all.
No, I'm fine with that. You might as well stick out your lip, Bob. I'm not a reasonable person, I don't think. Maybe my wife might be.
If that's your pleasure, then what I'll do is, I'll make the, I'll bring it back.
As an option.
As an, as an option, okay.
Then we had a meeting that, Bob was at Farm Bureau here last month, and it was brought up there, that the larger growers put up a bond, like you do when you have a mine, to...
Any sort of abatement?
Abatement, you know, that money's there, it isn't out of our coffers. What's the definition of a larger grower? I mean, the 41, 41 acres or more. You have to be plants, 75 plants or more. If they have, you can have five, eight, you can have six plants on.
On my opinion, I mean, 72 plants, I mean, that's a commercial grower, my...
Exactly.
Anything more than 12, according to Dennis Hines, is, you know, that's all you need for one person.
For purposes of this discussion, for purposes of this ordinance, I, you know, to be in a defensible position, I think we, I mean, 72 plants. I have to tell you that there's been some considerable discussion among staff. It's not staff's call, but to revisit and to make a request that you revisit the plant count numbers. I haven't done that, but I don't think I'm alone.
But I'll be a part of it.
We're not going to do that today.
Okay, that's fine.
So, why don't you take what we have and bring it back for your schedule thing in early March, and maybe look at some options and add-ons, and that way the board can, like a smorgasbord, decide what they want to include and not include. But have your base document revised like you're working on here.
Yes, sir.
So, I'm going to invite, capture, I'm just trying to get Bob.
Understood.
And if you're the board, Aaron.
One other thing I would like to bring up on this is, I know Maury and his staff's been a great deal of time along with you, Bob, and I'm sure Dean too, but I mean, for the enforcement to go out and check these, I mean, that's not necessarily part of their job description of his budget. I mean, is there some way to fund a position, or at least a part-time position during the summit, to go out and inspect these and make sure that everybody's in compliance and et cetera? Because I'm sure that this is...
That a motion?
No. I'm just curious, I'd like to hear from Maury.
I'm trying. So, the answer is, the answer is yes. It was a considerable dedication of resources. Now, mind you, it was the first time around. And so, there was involvement of some of us that probably wouldn't be involved if it, you know, as it played out. But because we had a new ordinance, we weren't sure how it was going to go, there was a considerable dedication of resources. But in reality, his department is bearing the brunt of this, no question. And so, I don't see that as anything but a follow-up from implementing a piece of legislation of this magnitude, and that is, is to also resource it. And so, but that's your call. I know they have a code enforcement officer now on staff, I believe, and so, or at least an interim. And so, but yes, it's going to take quite a bit of effort to, and if you recall from the commentary last fall, when we gave like a status on enforcement, you know, probably got to it too late last year. I'm going to start much earlier this year. That's why I'm interested in, you know, advancing this sooner rather than later. And so, I foresee more staff costs than we had last year. Even though last year, we were only involved for, you know, a couple of months. So, yes, sir, is the answer to your question.
Okay, any other questions on the board?
Okay, we're going to go ahead and take some comments from the public, and we do have a comment request coming from Randy Bach. Randy, always good to see you.
Good to see you guys.
Is that B-A-C-H?
B-O-C-K.
Thank you very much.
So, from what I understand, it's mostly the problems coming from out-of-county growers. Growers coming from other counties to Lassen County specifically to cultivate marijuana. Requiring a structure doesn't completely get rid of that problem. It doesn't stop out-of-county growers from coming here. There's well-funded, organized crime in Northern California that's got lots of money, that's buying large pieces of land, buying houses and buying stuff, specifically to grow. And that's definitely a problem in a lot of Northern California counties, just, just all through Northern California, B County to Alamosha, so they're all seeing it. But if you require a two-year primary residence, meaning that they have to have a primary residence in Lassen County for two years, that doesn't allow any of them to come. And pretty much, Lassen County residents that are here can continue to grow, as well as, I believe his name was Dennis, the guy that was in here last year?
Dennis Hines.
Dennis Hines. He had, he had mentioned that he couldn't even afford to build the smallest permitted dwelling, you know? So, I mean, if, under what's being proposed right now, it would kind of cause some sort of, it would adversely affect some Lassen County patients, Dennis and others included, you know? Him, I believe he's been a resident here for some time. So, I mean, being that he's been a resident, he would not be adversely affected. It would leave him alone and affect the people that are coming from out-of-county, as well as cannabis is now being, it's being considered an agricultural commodity. So, now that it's being considered an agricultural commodity, you kind of can, I believe, that it should be comparable with conventional farming. So, if you're conventionally farming, you're not always farming where your residence is located. Some farmers, a lot of farmers have their house with a farm here and another property here that they farm, another property here that they farm. And there's several reasons why a cannabis patient would want to do that. Say they live too close to a school and, but own property that's far enough away. Maybe they want to go cultivate there and stay away from the neighborhoods. Or they just don't want to be around their neighborhoods with any plants, you know? So, then they own five acres somewhere out in the valley where it's not near anyone else. They can go and cultivate there rather than staying right in the small residential areas. You know, I mean, I know several people that are doing specifically that. They just don't want their neighbors being affected by it. So, they own property that's away from everyone, and that's where they go cultivate their medicine. So, I just feel that Oregon's already requiring a two-year residency for them to...
Oregon has that built into their...
They already have that in, requiring the two-year residency before you can cultivate cannabis. And from what I see, it's working really well for them. There's not people, there was like a big influx for the last several years from Northern California and just California in general, to people going into Southern Oregon and Central Oregon specifically to grow, because they had fairly lax laws that weren't really restrictive. So, now that they pass this two-year residency, there's no one moving there. No one's going there to grow anymore. It's staying, they're staying away from, they're staying where they were because there's no opportunities for them there. You know what I mean? It's the same thing with all these other counties, Shasta's banned it. So, whoever's banning it, if people are going to move out of there, if they're living there for that reason, they're going to move out of there and try to move to somewhere that is more accepting, you know? So, I just feel that it'd be better to pass something that would more solely affect them and not the Lassen County patients that are already here, you know, Dennis and other...
So, how many of you lived in Lassen County?
I've lived here full-time for almost 10 years. I've been around here since I was 13, 14 years old, been around Janesville.
I was just, I was just going to join with you, because if you moved here like three years ago.
It's nice to close the gate at two years, because there's some people that would like to see the gate closed like maybe 50 years ago.
Yeah, and I don't blame them.
Chairman, if I'm not mistaken, the Oregon law though is a statewide residency, right?
It's statewide.
So, that's much different than saying a county residency or a community residency.
Yeah, it's a definitely difference stopping out-of-state growers. I mean, we're kind of more, it would be more towards that.
Colorado, Colorado doesn't have any sort of a residency requirement in theirs.
Colorado's regulation framework is fairly in-depth, so I mean, they're not, they're open to investors and stuff now, so they're not really requiring residency for people to come in and do that. Just with all the regulations as far as seed to sale that they have in place, I don't think they're really worrying about it. But being that we don't have those kind of regulations in place yet with these new three bills, it definitely is very strict regulations. They got pretty much a lot of everything covered in there. But that's all I had to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else like to comment? If not, then we'll bring it back to the board. What kind of direction do you want to give staff?
I think a little while with you, I agree, I support that.
Kind of feel like I already got it.
Okay, good. We'll look forward to bringing this back in March, and hopefully we can, with some of the add-on components, if we decide to add those to what we can.
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks. We'll move on then to item H6. We have two items left.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, item H6 is a contract between Lassen County Transportation Commission and the county. I'll be brief, because I know you want to get out of here. There's a staff report in the packet that details the analysis of the recommendation.
We've had, we've had for 40 years, basically, an informal arrangement, and now we're trying to renegotiate or deal with that. But in order to fix it, you got to have something to fix. So, what this document has is basically codifies what has been that arrangement. And it only runs until June 30th, so it's either going to have to be renewed by the commission, or the commission has to come up with a different way of conducting business. So, this is just basically a base book to work with. That was the starting thing, was to discover after all these years that we have a formal arrangement in place for the Lassen Transit Services, but we don't have, didn't have anything.
Nothing on paper.
Nothing on paper for this, so...
I wish Chairman Ryman that we accept the agreement that was written, passed by the Lassen County Transportation Council.
We actually put together by staff, and it's been adopted by the commission, it just needs to be adopted by us to finally place, ratify it. So, we have a motion by Mr. Hempel, is there a second? Second by Mr. Alba, is there any further discussion by the board? Is there any comments from the public? Aaron, then, Madam Perk, if you can hold it up, please.
Supervisor Payer. Supervisor Alba.
Aye.
Supervisor Hempel.
Aye.
Supervisor Chapman.
Aye.
So, we'll take up item H7. This is a letter of support to the Sierra Valley Conservancy.
Yes, again, I think the staff report speaks for itself.
Yeah, it, staff's been working on this. Is this coming out of our coordinating council, or the...
Fire Safety Council.
Fire Safety Council, okay. I knew it would be worked on by one or both of us. Okay. If there's no discussion, then you would entertain a motion?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Alba, second by Mr. Hempel. Do we have any questions from the audience? Hearing and then, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion is unanimous. That brings us to information for the board on this item.
Two quick items, as Supervisor Alba mentioned earlier, we'll be having the joint MoDak Lassen meeting on February 23rd, 2:00 p.m., and the Lassen MoDak Flood Control and Water Conservation District meeting before that at 1:30. So, you might want to mark your calendars for that. That's a regular meeting date, so we'll meet here in the morning and then head out.
Kevin Hapkin, one obsession, then follow-up, and...
The last thing, Mr. Correa, who was here this morning at Public Comment, I'm informed, went over to the Sheriff's Department, met with the Sheriff's Department staff. What he characterized as a two-hour response time was a 22-minute response time when they looked into it. And he's basically resolved those issues. In fact, the message I got from the sheriff was that he was hugging the Sheriff's Department staff. I don't understand.
Yeah, I think we need to keep a careful eye on this situation. One thing, if we could add to maybe Richard's report, I was looking at the calendar. Regina had mentioned to me the other day about trying to get a picture of the board, the new board, which we haven't had a picture for since I think Larry was on there. And so, if you would think about maybe on the 23rd, which would be two weeks from now, is make sure to dress like you would like to for, to be in a kind of a group picture, because she'd like to have that for the county website and stuff.
Plowing, plowing.
Where are your Sunday vests?
I was going to say, I don't think you have to worry about changing vests for that. Anyway, this is a kind of a heads up. We'll try to do that, maybe get it set up, so when we have the room, we can get that done. So, it's good to see Becky in the room. You come to fetch your husband? Good. Going to buy you lunch. Oh, Jesus.
So... Am I drugged, Steve?
Yeah, where are Jerry? I thought we did that.